From where?
All right, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order if everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody who turned out tonight. Thank you to everybody who is online. A special thank you to Fuersa Elementary's guitar group that was here earlier for the last 15 minutes, playing some wonderful music. We, we really appreciate that. We'll get started with special recognition. We will have Music in Our Schools Month, Winter Sports and Activities, and School Retirees Appreciation. Dr. Pierce?
Yeah, all right. Yeah, so March is Music in Our Schools Month, and as President Galbraith said, we were fortunate to have tonight, prior to the board meeting, Ruby Perez. Guitar Ensemble Group from Fuersa Elementary perform a number of songs for us tonight, and that was wonderful. Also, it's just been a music-filled week here in KSD. It was our forty-second Annual Choral Festival was held on Monday and Tuesday night. This year's theme was Stronger with Music, and I had the great fun of serving as the emcee for the event on both nights, on Monday and Tuesday. And it's just such a great, huge turnout, wonderful gathering of families to come, watch their students sing, and the students did such an amazing job, as well, of course, all the teachers. So I wanted to mention and recognize all the teachers who participate along with their students. Brad Barwell from Westgate Elementary, he's the chair of the event. Sarah Magelby Canyonview, Michelle Pyatt Sagecrest, Megan Miller Eastgate, Scott Wegman Kamaiakin, Lori Evans Southridge. So I'll pause right there and just say, it's mostly fifth graders who are performing, but that at one point in the evening, we have high school choirs perform. So the first night, it was Kamaiakin and Southridge, and the second night, it was Kennewick and Southridge. So continuing on, Matthew Remke from Southgate, Lori Lydean Cascade, Perry Kelly Amistad, Havlin Gilbert from Lincoln, Kelly McFadden from Vista, Jennifer Gunter from Kennewick, with the high school students, Ruby Perez, who again was here tonight, she's had a busy week, from Fuersa, and Doug Edwards from Cottonwood. So we're real proud of our music programs here in the district. You know, we've got them at all the elementary schools, and then on lots of options at middle and high school. So we're excited about that and just want to celebrate Music in Our Schools Month. So let's just give a big round of applause to our students and our music programs. Thank you.
And we'll go with Winter Sports and Activities. Mr. Matt Scott.
Good evening. So we are coming to recognize some of our outstanding athletes from our winter season. And I did want to just highlight that we'd have lots of great activities. We don't have any activities to highlight this, this time around, because we typically are going to be recognizing those students who participated at a state level and placed at a state level. We have a number of activity groups that are participating in state in upcoming weeks, so we're really excited about spring to have some more folks to provide you. But we do have our sports from each of our high schools, and we've got some bowlers and some wrestlers in the house. So we're going to start with Anna Harris, Athletic Director from Kennewick High School.
Hello. I have the honor of representing a bowling program that's done very well in the past, and this year again. And two of our wrestlers, who I'd like to introduce their coaches couldn't make it. They're coaching middle school spring sports. So if I could have Jaylee and Abraham come up. Both of these seniors play second place at state wrestling. And they both have matching postseason hair, still rocking the postseason doo, so that's good, too. And I'm going to introduce Tom Richardson, our bowling coach, and he can talk about our ladies.
Hi there. My name's Tom Richardson. I'm the bowling coach for Kennewick High School. With me tonight, I have four of the seven girls that went to state with us, and my assistant coach, Mike Samson. And so I'd like to introduce my two seniors, right? I got Lily Hooper and Samantha McMaster. And then coming back next year, I'll have Rayleigh Lamb and Alexis McGarry. So I appreciate the fact that you let us come here and recognize them, so thank you.
So next up, we have Athletic Director Kyle Callen from Kamaiakin High School.
All right, thank you again for having us. I have the privilege to also introduce our bowling coach and his team. So they had a great season this year. I'll let him talk about that. So let me introduce Scott Biglin. While he's coming up here, he won't say it, but I will. He was also the MCC Bowling Coach of the Year, so he won't say that accolade about himself, but he did get that, so Scott Biglin.
Thank you, guys, for having us here. As I introduce some of the girls right now. We are pretty senior-dominated. Lily Martinez is a senior, and Clara Demarest is a senior. She's going to bowl next year at Mount Mercy. So that's pretty awesome to have a couple of girls now in the college ranks. We got Alyssa Martinez, junior, coming back for us, and then Samantha Martinez is a sophomore. She'll be back for us as well. We had a great year this year. We went seventeen and oh. Always have tough battles with Kennewick. I mean, it's always fun to have two of the top teams in state play each other twice in a season. It gets us ready for the postseason. But, you know, last year, we both won, and this year, we both took second place, which is a phenomenal deal for us. Our girls this year actually bowled about 400 pins better than we bowled last year in the state tournament. We just ran into a bus-saw of a team that just wanted, wanted a little more than us. But it was a great season. I was very proud of them. We've come a long ways from going from seven years ago, winning one to two matches now, to being first, second, and third in the last three years. So very proud of these girls. And, you know, he says I was a coach of the year, but it's a tribute to these girls and what they do in the offseason, and how much time they put into it. They, they make me and my, my assistant coach here look good. So we do truly appreciate them and their parents, as I'm sure Tom will say the same thing about his. So, but thank you for having us.
Okay, and then we also have some sons in the house. So Rick Wells, Athletic Director from Southridge High School.
Appreciate being here tonight again. Get to talk about a couple of our outstanding wrestlers. My girls' wrestling coach, Steve Davis, is currently coaching golf at Meadow Lakes and enjoying the sun. So he's not able to be here, but I'm going to fill in for him for our outstanding female wrestler that's with us. Desiree Juarez, can you come up, come up real quick? Desiree was forty-three and six this year. She's a junior. She had thirty-two pins, won, I believe it was six tournaments. Yeah, six tournaments. Got third place in state, and she was in all-conference, and she was also our Winter Sports Athlete of the Year, and right now has one hundred and seven career wins. And next year, as a senior, she's going to be our all-time winning record holder at Southridge. So Desiree Juarez. And then I'm going to introduce our boys' coach, Annie Ladozzo, so he can talk about our male wrestler. Did an awesome job this year. Thank you, Annie.
Hello, thanks for having us. This is Quentin Ellison. He's a senior for us. He had forty wins this year. He won two tournaments, including the district tournament, and then he made the state finals. He's also a football player. He was all MCC in football, as well as wrestling. He was our winner athlete of the year, so I think he has a pretty good shot of being our athlete of the year for the whole season. So he's also got a 3.8 GPA. He plays the violin in orchestra. You know, he's just all-around student athlete. So Quentin Ellison, you got second place.
Awesome. Thank you to all the winter sports athletes and their coaches. We appreciate all that you do. All right. Next up, Dr. Pierce will lead us through School Retirees Appreciation Week.
All right. Well, this is always a fun week, because we get to recognize a couple of our very good friends. And they both happen to be here tonight as we celebrate School Retirees Appreciation Week. So this year, I'm going to start off by introducing President Dottie Stevens and President Victoria Russell, and ask them to come up and say a few words, and then I'm going to read the official proclamation and say a few words about you.
Great timing. Thank you so much. We really appreciate an opportunity to be here, be recognized, and to support you. We support public education. We support school boards, kids, parents, teachers. We're supportive. Ben Franklin School Retirees Association has eight hundred and forty-one members, and every month, we see them. And in January, we see about seventy to recognize our superintendents. And Dr. Pierce was there, and as a matter of fact, she is featured in our latest journal. She may not have had a chance to look at the March Journal, but you're in there. We made sure, because she did a fabulous presentation, as did the superintendents in Pasco and Richland. There are seventeen thousand of us in the entire state, and we're interesting in a different way in that we represent teachers, administrators, and classified. We're a group that represents all school retirees, but we're also working with present and future and working on the Hill. As a matter of fact, I was in the Hill in Washington, in Olympia, and I met with Representative Connors on some legislative issues. Other things we do, we do mini grants, and I would say that in Kennewick, well-represented. Teachers can apply for these, and we give out twenty three-hundred-dollar grants, and a third of them went to the Kennewick School District. So I'll let you see the kinds of things people apply for, mostly in house things, literacy and numeracy items. I'm here with my next president, because I'm president of the state organization. So I had to pick someone to take over after only five runs, and she's had three. So you can see how this is working, but we love it. We won't give it up. I actually worked in Kennewick for thirty-four years. I was a teacher eight years for you. I was at Kennewick High School as a principal and one of the developers of Legacy High School, and I was there my last thirteen years. But from Hanford High, we have Victoria Russell.
Thank you very much again for acknowledging us. It is truly appreciative. All I have to say is, once a teacher, always a teacher. And even though I taught in Richland, I am now focusing on Kennewick. I am, this is my second year at Team Reed. I work with third graders at Sunset View. This is my second try with pen pals at fourth grade, I think. I can't remember which school, but I just started with that. So I'd like to keep my hands... No, that Sunset View is the Team Reed. It's the other, that's my Team Reed. But I just started this other. I just wrote my first pen pal letter to a fourth grader, and, and it was, I can't remember. Eastgate. Okay, it's Eastgate. Thank you. But I'm just very busy, and you know what? I enjoy it, working with third graders. We have the most wonderful, dedicated, loving, and caring teachers in all of these schools. I am just so impressed, and I feel so warm when I enter into the school to work, and the kids are so happy. So they're used to seeing me now, and I feel like I'm being successful with a lot of these young people, and I enjoy it. However, I would not wish to be a third-grade teacher. That is not my, you know, I, I go, I don't know how they do it, you know, and they're doing this with this one and this one, and I'm going, and my head's spinning, and I'm working with one. But I'm so appreciative to be there. And I have to say, lastly, that when I first moved here in the early nineties, my oldest son went, my kids went to Sunset View Elementary, and I helped with the reading program then. And I'm going, now it's all together, and my grandchildren go to Desert Hill Middle School. So I find that I need to be involved in Kennewick, and I enjoy it. However, I did sub here when I first came, so you guys overlooked me, but that's okay. Thank you so much for all you do for the district. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We love having you guys here, and you are so deserving of recognition. Just all the support and positivity and everything you do for our district and our teachers and our students. So thank you. I want to take a moment to read the governor's proclamation.
Finally got it, huh?
Week 100, and then give, give you a few little goodies. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas residents of Washington State recognize the accomplishments of all retired school employees, and whereas it is important to acknowledge the value of educating and assisting retirees in meeting the special challenges retirement brings and work to bring their general welfare, and whereas residents appreciate the efforts of retired school employees to advance education by supporting high educational standards, and whereas school retiree organizations, such as the Washington State School Retirees Association..." "...and the Benton Franklin Schools Association..." "...promote group and individual involvement in charitable projects and activities, sponsor scholarships, and maintain interest and participation in education and community activities. And whereas retired educators are encouraged to remain active in the education profession through volunteer activities associated with learning, now therefore, I Bob Ferguson, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March seventeen to twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, as School Retirees Appreciation Week in Washington, and I urge all people in our state to join me in this special observance. It is signed March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, by Governor Bob Ferguson. So, thank you, Bob." And we want to take a moment here from KSD to give you a heartfelt thank you for your commitment, your encouragement, your investment, and your involvement. So we hope you enjoy all the mints, and we appreciate you for all the mints. And we've got a couple other little goodies in a goodie bag for you.
I love these bags. I carry mine all the time. Right. Thank you. I am proud to be a part of this area of education in Kennewick again. Thank you very much.
All right, moving along, we now have communication from parent staff and district residents. I forgot to get my little notes here. All right. "The Kennock School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community at regular board business meetings. The Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communication from parent staff and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the Board to listen to comments, input, and information. The Board does not respond to comments provided, as the goal is to listen and learn. Please know the Board's silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with speakers' remarks. As appropriate, the Board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Remember, your words have impact. Not you, not the school district, are responsible for those words. We caution all the speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws. Guidelines for addressing the Board. You'll be called to the podium. You'll have two minutes to speak. A stop light on the screen will let you know when to begin, when you have a minute remaining, and when your time has ended." Thank you to those who are speaking tonight. Do we have any online? We have no online. So first up, Ben Anderson. Come on up.
I saw on the agenda that you guys are going to be addressing a Title IX issue with a complaint for Washington State. I want to commend you on that decision to complain to Washington State about this Title IX decision that they're making broadly across the state, because Title IX, as we're all familiar with, began in seventy-two with, with the intent to protect girls and women more broadly. And it was specifically targeted towards sex-based protections. The more recent readings into Title IX, changing that to gender, gender identity and such, are, are still being ironed out, and it's up to us to understand that, that there are biological reasons, realities that exist to create Title IX in the first place. I encourage you to stay strong in this effort to protect the girls in, in our school system from being, having their successes diminished because boys out-compete them in some, some physical feat that they couldn't compete with in the first place. I think it's incumbent upon you, because you were elected to represent the values of this community, to express that to OSPE and make sure that they understand that you are stuck between a rock and a hard place, between a state and a federal law, and Title IX funding is not a small thing. And it's incumbent upon you to live up to the values that you were elected to represent. And I certainly represent those values. I know that you guys represent those values broadly. And I hope that you can stand courageous in, in, in this effort to protect young women.
Thank you. All right, that's all that we have signed up for tonight. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? Floor is open. No takers? All right, we will move along then. We will move to the consent items, and I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent items as presented.
Thank you. Patty, we have a motion. Please call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Communications Follow-Up. We will turn the time to Dr. Pierce. If you have any follow-up?
Well, the only item I have is follow-up from the last board meeting regarding PE credit, and we've actually incorporated that into the presentation on PE tonight. So that's probably the best place to do that follow-up.
Perfect. All right. We will move along then to Superintendent and Board Member Reports. We will start with our student rep, Annie.
We've got nothing tonight, guys.
Nothing? Okay. All right. Hey, we're, we're moving right along. All right, Dr. Pierce, you're up.
All right. Well, it's been a busy couple of weeks. I just wanted to highlight, I had the opportunity to speak at the eighth-grade honors breakfast at Desert Hills Middle School. Great opportunity to recognize all the students with GPAs, cumulative GPAs of 3.75 and above, even a couple of 4.0s in the group, and it was a nice, big group. So that was fun. We had a, one of our learning walks where we get together as groups of administrators to go visit classrooms and discuss instruction. That was at Kennewick High School. Great visit there. I'm not going to take away from Dr. Brillhart's presentation, but we did successfully complete our bond refunding and bond sale process. So you're going to hear more about that in his presentation. I've already talked about the great music festival that occurred earlier this week. And so the only other thing I wanted to highlight was the Crystal Apple Awards, which occurred last week. So that's our opportunity to identify and recognize a Crystal Apple Award winner from our district who can then go on to compete for state teacher of the year. So we're really proud to celebrate Nathan Allington, who is our 2025 winner. He's the TRITech Emergency Medical EMS, what's the S? I know. Thank you. Firefighting instructor at, at TRITech, and he's a former US Marine. He transitioned from military service to teaching, and he's just got a deep commitment to his students, to mentorship, to discipline, and to leadership. He's, for over a decade, really inspired and taught future firefighters, providing hands-on experiences, nights and weekend trips, in addition to doing community service of his own. So it was just a great opportunity to recognize him. He had quite a fan club with him at the awards ceremony. There were students, there were former students, colleagues, and family members. It was a big group. And so it was just awesome to celebrate him and the positive impact that he has had on many, many people. So...
Great.
That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Moving right along. Mr. Connors?
Well, I'd love to tell you something new and different, but I, I never mind. I have not done much this week.
No, no worries. Dr. Miller?
I've had those weeks.
Yeah.
First of all, I wanted to say congratulations. I know the bowling team has left, but, you know, I, I think it is amazing when you see not just teams having success occasionally, but consistently developing programs that are just competing at an extremely high level. And, and I know the bowling team has, has achieved that, and I think that speaks volumes to not only the students, but also to their coaches in developing a program that can consistently teach these athletes and help them be successful. I think that's amazing. We've talked about the Kamaiakin Cross Country Team, these bowling programs. It sounds like they're right up there. I mean, the same thing, just creating a, a consistent program of, of success and, and teaching these kids some, some really great, great skills. So really, congratulations to them, and particularly a huge thank you to the coaches. I know that's a huge dedication of their time and their ability to really help those kids and impact their lives. In terms, I, I had a chance to, I went by and saw, met with Guy Stroud over at, and saw Legacy and Endurance, Endeavor, Legacy Endeavor and Phoenix, and, and had a great conversation with him. I've continued to work on my efforts in looking at a Kennewick foundation that can help with some of the, some programs that we might look to develop outside of the school district, which I think would be, continue to think would be great. I met with some people that, some people have already done a lot of the, they've already done a lot of the work and are doing some really amazing things in terms of scholarships. And it amazes me to see people in our community who are making a difference. And that is, that is one thing I would encourage anybody listening to these school board meetings. If you have that hour or forty-five minutes to listen to the school board meeting, you may find that you may have half hour or an hour to, to volunteer somewhere, whether it's in our schools with a reading program. in our schools with a reading program or with one of the wonderful service organizations in our community. I think getting involved in our community makes a huge difference, and I would invite you and encourage you to look for opportunities to get involved. It will make you feel happy, it will help you find joy, and it doesn't really matter whether it's big or small, your contribution matters, and it makes a huge difference. And particularly when you're volunteering in our schools, I think anybody who's volunteered in the school, whether it's with a reading program or helping with one of the PTOs, thank you, thank you. And I know that you feel the benefits of that because it makes a difference in these kids' lives, and it can help you feel purpose as well. So thank you to all those, and I would encourage anybody who's not, please, get involved. It's great. So yeah, that's the big things. I'm sure there are others, but that was the big thing.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Ms. Gladhill?
Okay, so spring sports have started again, so I was at a couple of track meets over the last couple of weeks, and those will be picking up throughout the spring. I did a school visit to Edison Elementary, had a good visit there, seeing some of the updated programs and facilities that they have at the school. I love all school visits, but I really love the elementary school visits, so it was great to be back at Edison. I had a chance to go to, Phoenix High School had an expo for their project-based high school, and so they had an hour-long expo where anyone from the community could go and talk with students directly about what projects they are working on right now. And I saw on our list, but I happen to have a good friend that's a student there, and she invited me and had a really great time. Had only time to talk with four students during that hour, but I learned about the differences between learning guitar from an in-person instructor versus someone online, and then also learned about the scientific properties and the history of soap making. So those were a couple of the more interesting projects that I learned about while I was there. Sorry, my screen closed on me. I, just to echo what Dr. Miller was sharing about volunteering separately from school board, I'm involved in an organization called Just Serve. We had a big volunteer fair this last Saturday. We had fifty nonprofit organizations that were there. Just an opportunity for anybody in the community to come, find an organization that meets, that matches your interest and your availability, and to get involved in the community. It's our second year doing it, and I really like that because it's a good little marriage for me with school board because we always have some community partners there. I had a chance to stop by the Team Read booth and talk with the Team Read individuals, and when I'm done with school board, I will be, Victoria, a lifelong Team Read volunteer because that's where my heart is next. So that's where I'm heading next. But just want to echo what Dr. Miller was already sharing, that for anyone listening that's not involved in volunteerism, there are some great opportunities out there, and it will only enrich your life and the life of the people you get to volunteer with. So please look for something because there's so much out there. And then this, I guess yesterday, I had a site visit to Vista. And again, just really love those elementary school visits, and Vista's got some really great things going on. They've, they have really been very purposeful and mindful about how they have constructed their school setting to really support their students and their teachers. So it was impressive to see how that's developed over since I saw them last year. I'll give a brief legislative update. I know I did a lengthy one last time, but, so, you'll remember that two weeks ago, we had four bills that were still being talked about, MSOC bills and special education bills. The transportation bills had fallen off two weeks ago. It's been two more weeks, and so now we only have one MSOC bill and one special education bill remaining. The House bills have been dropped. They were discussed in committee, they were peeled back even more, and then at the end of the committee, they didn't even make it out of committee. So our, our last opportunity to kind of restructure some of our funding from the state is with the Senate. So those are Senate bills, oh, I didn't read, no, Senate Bill Fifty-One-Ninety-Two and Senate Bill Fifty-Two-Sixty-Three. And I don't have an update for you on where they are this week. But I did think that this was one important thing just to point out. This isn't strictly educationally, educational related, but it is. So Senate Bill Fifty-Seven-Ninety-Seven is the state intangibles tax. This is something that's been proposed as a way to increase revenue because our state budget, we have a sizable gap. And so this is, essentially, it's a wealth tax, so it's for anybody who has fifty million dollars or more in stocks, bonds, right? So, but what is important to point out about this is that the press release, and it's being marketed as a tax that where the proceeds will go directly and solely to public education. But when you read the bill itself, it says in the bill that it goes to the general fund. So that's just some information for you to know and to do as you please, but it is being marketed as a bill that will strictly benefit K-12 education, but it's not written to be that way. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Valentine?
All right. Okay, so I just want to touch on two quick things. One, so I have this project that I'm working on. Joshua has a project, Brittany and I all have projects. My project is really about food and nutrition to our kids, and I just, I believe in my heart that if we can, the better food we can give our kids, the better that they'll perform. So one of my efforts is I'm going around with Tom and Christine and maybe a couple other members, and we're visiting schools and we're eating their lunches. And our first visit was last week. We have another visit tomorrow, right, Tom? Don't be late. Okay, now I was actually late, and I am. And so, yeah, and then we eat the lunches and kind of eat a little bit of everything, get a full scope, and see what kind of, eat what we're feeding our kids and see how we feel. So my goal is that we can work our way towards, you know, towards Whole Foods and not, nothing ultra-processed and nothing with refined sugars. So we're talking about some things, and it's early in the process, but I hope to maybe like present to everybody, and hopefully we can pilot something in the summer where we can maybe take a test school, and we're kind of working through that. But, so anyway, that's one of my main projects, so I'll kind of keep updating as we go along through that. And then the other thing is, I know we have this Title IX thing, I just want to just briefly mention something about that. I don't know if we're going to have a discussion about it or not, I really don't know, but I just want to say that this Title IX, Boys and Girls Locker Rooms, Boys and Girls and Fields, this is a very easy issue to solve. It's just you just have two divisions. One division's for people who have double X chromosomes and produce an egg, and then the other division is for everybody else, an open division, and it's really solved. And it doesn't have to be political, it really doesn't need to be. This is a ninety-ten issue. As a matter of fact, I think it'd be challenging to find one out of every ten people who disagreed with this in our community. It is easily a ninety-ten issue. And Reitl is acting like a dictator and ignoring the will of the people, and especially locally, but across the state. Nationally, it's at least an eighty-twenty issue, and he's asserting his politics over the will of the people, over we, the people, and we are being forced to abandon common sense. We're being forced to abandon safety. We're being forced to do things, to expose our kids to things that they should not be exposed to, and that is all his political agenda. And I just want to make that very clear. Parental rights are under attack. We have to, when we give our kid an Advil, we gotta, we gotta talk, call home. When we show our kids a PG thirteen movie, we've got to call their parents. If they're on track to graduate, we're calling their parents, but they can change their gender without notifying their parents. That's his proposal. They can change their pronouns. It just doesn't make sense. It's common sense has left the room. It is just an absolute radical agenda, and if there's ever anything worth fighting for, it's the safety of our kids, and I yield with that.
Thank you. Real quick, so I went to the Riverview PBIS Assembly, which was, which was great to see. I saw Eric there. Ridgeview, did I say something else? Riverview, sorry. I read that sheet that passed around, I'm sorry. I know, and my wife works there. That's terrible. Don't tell her I said that, she's probably watching. Yeah, you'll see her tomorrow, yeah. Yeah, don't tell them over there. No, it's great. So they recognize these kids, three kids from each classroom, you know, they make a big play out of it, and the kids kind of run up, and they run through a teacher tunnel, and everybody's, you know, shaking pom-poms and stuff. And so it's just really fun to see these kids get recognized. They love it. The kindergartners are a hoot because they don't know which way to run, and so it's just, it was just a real fun event to go to. Other than that, I know Brittany's working hard on the legislation stuff, but once that wraps up, WASDA's proposal windows and everything just are opening. So all that work happens now through the summer, and I'm happy to take on some of that. But WASDA General Assembly is kicking off with proposals and all that stuff now, so the fun never, never stops. So awesome. So we will move along with that. We've got a few reports and discussions here. First up is Tom, who's going to walk us through the preliminary budget again. Third meeting in a row, so we're rocking and rolling through this.
We'll continue. All right, good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are primarily going to focus on, bless you, on our transportation vehicle fund and debt service fund. Before I begin, I do want to invite anybody else who'd like to join us on our eating tour at all the cafeterias. It's a tough gig. It's a tough gig, but somebody's got to do it, so someone has to do it. But anyways, so yes, so of course, again, this falls into the fiscal oversight of one of our biggest responsibilities as a district. Make sure, again, we are projecting as accurately as we possibly can and planning forward. So again, tonight, we're primarily going to focus on our transportation vehicle fund, our school bus replacement process, our debt service fund, our debt service retirement schedule, and as Dr. Pierce alluded to earlier, our 2015 bond refi as well. So our transportation vehicle fund, of course, the purpose of that is just that, to buy buses, and of course, the appropriate equipment, obviously, to run those buses. So our largest revenue source is, comes from the state, of course, from our state school bus depreciation values. As you probably know, the older a bus gets, the more money we get for that asset because of the value's going down. So to replace that value, obviously, has to go the opposite direction. So buses depreciate over a timeframe of thirteen years, so technically, we cannot receive any funding for the replacement of that asset, again, until it hits its thirteenth year. So, so of course, as of right now, the earliest buses, we could, we could revolve into that formula would be our 2012 buses. So our bus fleet as of today is about a hundred and thirty-eight buses, and that includes your, your regular buses and then also your special needs buses as well. And as of right now, we have received all of our new two thousand four, or two thousand twenty-four buses. Just to note, those two thousand twenty-four buses were actually ordered in 2023, and were actually part of the 2022-23 budget because you ordered them, of course, basically about this time of year. So we just now are getting them, which unfortunately has been a commonality across the nation. We're running between twelve and eighteen months as an order, and it's just simply due to, there's just not as enough made in the, in the country. I think there's three factories that produce these things, and I think how many school districts are across the country, so it's just, just kind of a shortfall. The nine buses that we ordered this time last year, we expect to get in August of 2025. Again, of course, those were part of last year's budget, of course. And as of right now, we're still evaluating to kind of right-fit our current fleet, knowing that, again, we have, we have a healthy fleet, we have buses that need to be replaced. We're trying to identify our greatest needs right now, but balancing that with kind of the unknowns of some, some possible like cleaner air acts to where, okay, is there going to be technology there that's going to, you know, get us to where we need to be in order to be compliant with different, different rules that are, you know, set, are set to take place in 2026, or 2027, or 2028? And most importantly, cost. Cost of buses have went up dramatically in the past, past year. And so, again, just making sure that, again, we don't put the transportation fund in jeopardy, and again, just making sure we keep, keep our eye on that. So normally, this, at this board meeting, April would be here to highlight the transportation department, and then also highlight the potential purchase for buses for next year. But because of all those factors, we've decided to pause that about a month, so she'll be coming in April to give everyone an update. But like I said, as of right now, we're kind of eyeing seven as of right now, but again, that number may fluctuate a few just depending on all those factors, so. But again, we'll learn more about that in come April.
Tom, real quick, I got a question for you. So at a hundred and thirty-eight buses, you know, on a thirteen-year AM schedule, you know, we've got to replace ten and a half buses a year, so we've got to be falling behind.
Yeah, so again, that's part of the math that we're trying to balance is, and the good thing is, for our district, our buses, we don't drive a heavy amount of miles on a daily basis, so some of those buses, we can extend those lives. So just because they're up for replacement in 2012 or whatnot, they still have life in them. So of course, we want to be, you know, mindful of that asset, and we want to try to utilize it to the best of our ability to where it's not, you know, we're not pouring more money into it than what, what it would obviously be advantageous for us to replace it with a new asset, so.
Sure, I just, I'm glad you said, and I.
No, I'm glad you pointed that out.
Well, and I guess my concern is, is, you know, after ten years, now all of a sudden you're, you know, ten, eleven buses behind, so now, now you're sending things out way past thirteen year, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, hence the need for possibly some legislation.
Along those lines, I was going to ask, what's, what's the distribution? I mean, where is it, is it, are we pretty consistent? Where, where's the distribution of the age of our fleet?
It's pretty even, yeah. Again, I would kind of defer to, for April to answer that question with more specificity. Yeah, that'd be.
Yeah, she could even maybe have a distribution curve because to Mike's question, and that was one of the things I had, is what's the distribution? Because we don't want to have a big, big lull because then we have to catch up.
Yeah.
We don't want to rely on the state to bail us out.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
Yeah, so let's not, that's not.
Let's not do that, yes. Yeah, yeah. But, but again, holistically, I mean, for the department, I mean, it's, I mean, it's a balancing act. I mean, obviously, we got to make sure that we have staffing, we have assets, and we have technology to help us make sure that, again, we're going to be able to be as efficient as we possibly can, and to make sure that, again, we are providing the service to the best of our ability moving forward. So, you know, with the school buses, I mean, that, you know, they range in so many factors, whether it be size, whether it be seating capacity, whether it be wheelchair lifts, non-wheelchair lifts, to kind of, again, answer that question with specificity, I'd rather April probably do that, she's going to be able to tell you kind of where those pockets are a lot better than I'd be able to.
And then I know we talked about this before, but we had talked about with the laws and grandfathering in and those kind of things, about possibly purchasing a surplus last year. We talked about possibly purchasing more so that we may be able to avoid. Have we looked at that more or no?
We, we have not, since I've been here, at least, we have not. One of the things that, then again, I mentioned earlier, there is some technology that Cummins is potentially going to have approved by the DOT that, basically, they make an emissions-free or diesel type of engine. We don't know when that's going to hit the market. That's, again, another reason why we're trying to, trying to pause a little bit because, you know, with the complexities of potentially, you know, going more green, whether it be in an electric standpoint or whatnot, we just don't know, again, what that total platform would look like, so we're kind of, like I said, trying to slow-play this at least to make sure, again, if that technology's there, that it might be a better option for us, you know, with our current footprint, so.
Would that technology be significantly more expensive?
Be determined. I would assume yes, so.
So I guess my question would be beneficial to get before the technology comes out so that we can be grandfathered in and not have to pay for a bunch of more.
The good thing, we have time, we have time, and so, again, April will probably highlight this in April.
Perfect.
But even if we, even if we put an order in as late as, let's say, August, let's say, we, you know, us getting them in next August, or next September, or next October, it's not that three-month, you know, timeframe, it's not going to put us in a hindrance, let's put it that way, because we have a good fleet, so.
Any other questions related to that? Okay. As far as the fund goes, some things I did want to know, again, our adopted budget for twenty-four, twenty-five has not changed, of course. Our projected actuals, the only thing I did want to note, notice that we don't have a placeholder for an expense because, again, we're kind of holding out as of right now, just, again, making sure, are we going to order those seven?
What are those seven going to cost? And again, we'll update that hopefully by, by April. But again, our preliminary budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, again, as of right now, looks extremely similar. Again, making sure what we do this year was obviously going to impact the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So as of right now, again, we have a placeholder of eight, eighteen hundred dollars allocated for school bus replacement, which is, again, similar to what, what it was for this budget. But again, that number may, may need to go up a little bit depending on pricing and, again, different, different factors, so. So again, just wanted to point that out, that this will definitely change by June, for sure, so.
Just for April's presentation, again, we'll look at both costs, right, with air conditioning, without air conditioning, determine if we have enough with AC.
Yes, perfect, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we're going to pivot now to debt service. So of course, the purpose of debt service is just that, pay, pay off your debts. So of course, the number one way a school district can raise funds to pay for building projects and improvements is to issue debt. For the most part, those debts are spread out over either a 10, 15 or 20-year period, very similar to, to mortgage on a home. And so one of the things I did want to note on, on this debt service fund spreadsheet that you see here. So our, our revenues, we come, come twice. Okay. So we get our largest chunk in April because people pay their taxes in April. Runs to the county, county admits payment to the municipalities. So we get about 50%, 56% of our annual budget in April. And then usually that remaining 44% we get in October. So one thing to really note and kind of, kind of keep in mind is, is when our payments are due in totality for our, for all of our outstanding debt. So our payments are due in, kind of in the rear. So we pay in December in the rear before we actually get that April payment. Because you're getting, you're in this budget year, a little confusing. And then we pay again in June. So the reason I bring that up, this, this cash balance that you see right here is extremely important to keep, keep healthy. Okay? Because again, bondholders don't care if the county pays us or not. They, they want their payment and rightfully so. That's one of the, one of the things they're, they're guaranteed when we, when we do these agreements. So we just want to make sure that, again, we always have a healthy balance in that fund to where, again, if, if there is a potential delay in payment, which historically I don't think that's ever happened, but again, if it is, we obviously have enough cash flow that we can, we can obviously make our payments on time without any type of penalties. So, so one thing, again, I did want to note too, this, this spreadsheet right here does not reflect our 2015 bond refi. I'll kind of show you a different sheet later in the presentation that does reflect that. So again, full, full, after we close that refi bond in April, it's scheduled for April 3rd as of right now. Once we close that, then we'll go in and we will update this. I mean, we pretty much know exactly what our payments are going to be anyways. But again, I just kind of wanted to show this as, hey, this is kind of a, kind of a pre and then obviously we'll have a post when we come back in June with more, with more specifics. So. Any questions on this? All right. Again, speaking of specifics, so as you can see with this spreadsheet, this is our retirement schedule. So as you note, the 2015 bond that we just refinanced, we do have still a, a payment left to make in the, in the, in the 24, 25 budget, which you'll see of that 1.1 million right there. And then it, of course, now becomes a, a 2025 issuance because we literally resold and reissued that same bond. So the amortization schedule of that is still, it's still memorializes in 2034. But again, it's, it's now just recalled a different bond. So this time next year, you will not see a 2015 bond on the chart, if that, if that makes sense. So, so the one thing I do want to note, so in totality, prior to our bond sale, we had 2,210 million dollars in outstanding bond payments that we obviously are obligated to pay. And after our bond sale, that, that now has dropped to 205 million. So a total net savings for, for the school district and our community and our taxpayers of about 4, 4.36 million dollars. So, so that's a, that's a, that's a great thing. And, and, and I do want to say, I do, I do want to say thanks to Mr. Vic Roberts for putting us, helping us in this position in kind of starting the engine on this process. I want to thank Dr. Pierce, obviously for her time, brain and lord. It was, it's, it's a big process. I mean, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes and definitely it's, it's a team effort. But, but that 4.3, 4.36 million is definitely what, this is the right thing to do. So it definitely builds capacity for the district in the future and, and it's obviously, like I said, good for our taxpayers as well. Another thing I did want to note, so one of the, one of the limitations we have is we cannot bond out more than 5% of our assessed value. So for, for our district, that, that total is about 788 million. So, so again, if, if you note the, the, the 205 and that 788, that leaves us with a capacity of about 637 million dollars of bond, bonding potential. I don't have a clue what that would do to our, our, our tax rate. I don't even want to do that number. But, but I do want to note that we are only hitting about 19% of our capacity legally. Okay? By, by statute. So that leaves us 81% left. So, so again, by no means do we intend on ever getting to that point. But, but we, but we have that ability statutorily speaking. So again, just want to note that. This is probably one of my favorite charts because again, it kind of gives you just a good snapshot of our, you know, kind of going off of what I just said about your capacity. So, so this is our amortizations, our new amortization schedule after the bond refi. So as you can see, as time goes on, the, the stair step approach takes place because again, we're paying down our debt as, as we go along. So right now, we are, we are going to be paying about 19.1 million in, in debt this year. And so as you can see, moving forward in 2026, that, that drops to just above 14 million. And again, consequently just continually goes down. Okay? So that is something that we definitely want to keep our eye on because again, this, this gap per se could, could be argued as potential debt capacity. Okay? Just to kind of keep it as even as it is in 2025, for instance. So, so that's always, again, a good snapshot to kind of keep our eye on. Because again, we just, you know, and, and this sounds awful. Everybody says, no, you don't, don't want to have debt, don't want to have debt. And that's true, but for municipality, that's, that's our one avenue to get revenue. So if we're going to, if that's our only, one of our only avenues to get revenue, we just want to make sure we do it correctly and we want to do it respectfully. So. So any questions on this one? Okay. Talking about debt capacity and obviously that kind of coincides with total tax rate. And so what I wanted to show the board, so when you talk about our total tax rate, of course, that not only encompasses our debt service, but also our EPNO and then also our tech levy as well. So again, this is a lot of numbers and I'm mainly just going to focus on the very bottom line. So as of right now, our AV is 15.7 billion. We'll talk about that a little bit more in specifics here in a little bit. So right now, our, our debt service rate just for our bonding is a buck 21. And again, that's going to equate to about 19.1 million in, in bond payments for this year. And then our EPNO levy, which again is 23.9 million, that has not changed. That rate is at a dollar 52. And then our tech levy is 4.75 million and that rate is 30 cents. And of course, if you add that all up, we're just above $3 for our, our tax rate for the district. So, so again, one thing to note, as you can see historically, I mean, it, it fluctuates. But the one thing I do commend Kennewick School District for is because, you know, with our AV rising a lot in the, in the last handful of years, that tax rate coinci, uh, coincidentally has obviously went down as well, which is, which is a good thing. I mean, that's a good thing. So we obviously don't want to go in the opposite direction too much. So, so again, that is, that is definitely a good thing. So like I said, I commend the district, commend the board for, for, for being able to make that happen.
So for our taxpayers, we have the, so for our taxpayers, we have the lowest tax rate and the highest fund balance.
I believe you are.
In the tricities, in the area.
Yes, yes, yes. In the tricities. Yes.
By long ways. So.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think, I think, you know, to that point, I think as we're getting into the next couple of years, talking about needing to pass bonds and levies, I think this is important to note that you can see historically, we're very low compared to historicals. And, and while we want to be very respectful and, and very careful about asking our community members to participate more, I, I think also it's important to understand that, you know, even 10 years ago, it was, you know, 60, 70% higher. You know, you're, you're talking $5 to $3. And, and so, you know, as, as we're getting less funding from the state and we're getting everything, we recognize everybody's having to pay more for everything. It's getting harder and harder to, to manage the finances of the district with less and less.
Yep. Good point. Any other questions on this slide? So let's talk about that bond refi. Again, this just got wrapped up on March 18th. Again, we don't close until April the 3rd. So, you know, we'll definitely, hopefully we get delivered a nice, you know, box of the boat on it or something if we close. But, but again, this was the 2015 bond. Again, we brought this forward to the board back in the winter. Again, appreciate the board being able to pass that resolution to, to allow us to move forward with this. So one of the things I did want to note, so, so this, this AA3 rating, we were able to maintain that with this bond issuance as well. One of the biggest components that they look at when, when giving a municipality a rating is again, the assurance that you're going to be able to pay your debt. Because again, you have bondholders purchasing these things from afar, all over the country, all over the world. And they're looking at us as a business to make sure, okay, if I'm going to sign this agreement with you for 10 years, as I said earlier, I got to make sure I'm going to get paid twice a year. So one of the biggest things they look at is our fund balance, as you were saying earlier. We have an extremely healthy fund balance. That is a good thing. That's a very good thing. I can assure you that was probably the biggest factor that helped us keep our, keep our rating. Which, when you do that, when you keep that rating at a, at a high level, it helps drive this. Okay? That, that interest rate. Because again, that interest rate is a reflection of risk. And obviously the more risky the entity, that interest rate's going to be higher. So note, note, when we sold this bond at 4.99% and we sold it again at 3.26%, that's your savings. So the thing I want to make sure that we fully understand, having a healthy cash balance is going to keep that savings up for, for us. Because again, we're going to be able to keep that interest, interest rates low when and if we do issue more bonds into the future. So again, that's just something we've got to keep on our, on our forefront. Because again, it, it matters. And ultimately, that, that, that in itself is, is good for our taxpayers as well. So. So as I alluded to earlier, the total savings over that 10-year timeframe is 4.36 million. And this is our new amortization schedule, as I talked about earlier, that, that is now the 2025 bond that'll be renamed. And again, that of course, will, will start at the end of this calendar year, but beginning of the, of the fiscal year. So. Any questions related to this? Okay. Another thing that we definitely want to keep our eye on is what's going on in our community. I mean, obviously when you're talking about tax rate, talking about AV, we're talking about just everything in totality. We just want to make sure we keep a healthy pulse. And I would invite anybody, public board, anybody to get familiar with the Benton County website. They have a great GIS tool that you can drill down into specifics on, hey, if you want to know a certain region of the county, the county in whole, age groups. I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty significant in helping us again, to kind of, kind of not only tell our story, but know where the story's going into the future. So, so one of the things, obviously, what we always want to keep in mind on and focus on is, you know, what's the median household assessed value as of right now? And I know that's really tiny and really blurry. So it's about 389,000 as of today. And so of course, you know, is that going to go up? Is that going to go down? Again, what's the historical trend? Where, where's it going into the future? Because I mean, ultimately, that's the, that's the taxpayer per se that we want to make sure that, that we keep in mind on that, on that total. Because, because again, that, at the end of the day, that matters dollars. And so again, we just want to make sure we keep, uh, keep that on our forefront. Another interesting item that, that again, you can really drill down into this is, is again, different tax groups. Whether, you know, we have certain groups that are exempt or non-exempt. So again, it just really help, help, is going to help us plan for the future. And again, I would encourage anybody to try to get as familiar with it as they, as they possibly can. Good site. So with that note, some of the, again, just historical significance of, of our community here in Kennewick, their average sale of a, of a home. Again, this is not a big surprise with AV going up, average sale of those homes reflect that as well. So of course, they, they topped out in, in 2022. And then of course, have since somewhat leveled off since then. But again, that's something we, again, we want to make sure that we keep a strong pulse on to ensure that, that, that again, we know where the, the market's going because that's going to impact obviously our, our community. Speaking on assessed value, which again, is kind of a reflection of, of home sales. So with our assessed value, again, as I spoke in an earlier board meeting, this is one of the hardest things to try to, try to get right just because there's so many factors, as we talked about earlier, that go into this. And again, as we, as we spoke earlier, who, who, who would have thought just a handful of years ago, you know, the tax rate would have went up 14 and 22%? I mean, that's just, that's just unheard of. No, no one could predict that. So. And that's, that is, you know, not only centered here in this community, but, you know, nationwide in, in certain pockets as well. But again, who could predict that? So, so there's a lot of different methodologies on trying to predict your, your tax rate into the future. I think I mentioned this.
Can I just clarify? You're talking, you're, you're talking about the assessed valuation, not the tax rate.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. I was in the zone. Sorry. Assessed valuation. So again, there's a lot of different methodologies you can use when trying to do that. One, one, one way that I've commonly used is your last five-year average. Well, if you, if you do that with this formula, as you can see, you're going to be way off because of these two outliers. So looking at just the five-year average, taking away those two outliers, we're still projecting. If, if again, if you just do it by that methodology, you're still predicting an 8, 8.4% increase potentially in assessed value. And again, I don't think that's going to be the case, but, but again, that's just how the math works out. So again, that's something obviously we're going to bounce off the assessor's office, bounce off of some of our, our, our partners with DA Davidson and Northwest Municipal Advisors. Again, just make sure, hey, you know, what are, what are we thinking? What are we seeing? Because what's reflective over here might be reflective over there. Because again, this is something we want to try to get as accurate as possible can as we build the budget for next year. Any questions on that? And that summarizes my presentation. So any questions in the hall?
Anybody have any questions? Real quick? No? So I just learned this, this week and I, I just want to share it. Correct me if I'm wrong. So OSPI does a financial indicators score for all the school districts in the state based on a certain criteria. So that criteria is fund balance to revenue, expenditures to revenue, days cash on hand and a four-year summary plan. And the reason I bring this up is because another school director asked me about it. And so when I looked into it, I was actually quite, quite pleasantly surprised. And so I, I think it's important to share this with folks. So Kennewick's average score the last four years on this indicator is a 3.58 out of 4. Our neighboring folks, Pasco is a 2.65 and Richland is a 1.98. So within our own ESD, ESD 123, we have the fourth highest score. Couple of in front of us are quite a bit smaller districts than, than we are. But we're also in the top 100 in the state in terms of that financial indicator. So I just want to share that because I thought that those are good metrics to share with folks. That shows our financial responsibility as a district and, and, and how we're doing well and keeping that up. So thank you to you and your, you and your team.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And again, just a reminder, obviously our, our budget process and timeline, again, a lot of things will happen after April 27th. But until then, we'll keep chugging along.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We will continue moving along with Dr. Brillhart and Mr. Ryan Jones. They got a nice little presentation on asset preservation and capital projects update. We'll let you guys knock this one out.
I yield the floor to Ryan.
You need Dr. Pierce, members of the board. It's hard to believe it's been a year, but here we are again to talk about asset preservation and see, show you how well our buildings are holding up. So here is the topic overview. So once again, here is the, the WAC basically that, that outlines the, the asset preservation requirements. And just our, our, our requirement to track the condition of our buildings and report to the board on an annual basis, which is what we're here doing today. Just real quick, this is just kind of the breakdown of how the scores work. I believe you've seen this before. But really, you know, excellent, it represents new construction. Good is fairly new construction. Fares, where you start looking at some, some minor capital projects. And then of course, when you get down to the poor range, which we don't have anything really close to that, but you start talking about, you know, large scale capital projects, building replacement, things of that nature. These are the sites that are currently identified by the state as asset preservation schools, meaning that they have been identified in the high cost system by OSPI as being the ones we are absolutely required to report. But once again, we treat every building in our district as an asset preservation school and update conditions on an annual basis. And we are kind of working on this list. There's, I'm working with Mark Brown from OSPI because there are a couple of schools on here that really should be asset preservation schools by the WAC. So we're working through that, but he's not as, as concerned as us because once again, we treat everyone as asset preservation. So you're going to notice there's not a lot of changes. asset preservation. So you're going to notice there's not a lot of changes. Uh, there, the most we've had a couple of sites go up or down, maybe like a percentage point or two. And a lot of that's through just, uh, like routine maintenance where there's something identified that was dragging down a certain part, uh, or a certain, uh, category of the school. And, uh, you know, we've repaired that. For instance, example would be like Horse Heaven Hills, we had some exterior doors that were showing, uh, that were, uh, showing signs of rust and breaking down and things like that. So we, as we replace those, that of course brings those exterior doors score up. Um, the categories themselves are all weighted differently. Uh, you know, as far as HVAC or foundation, uh, things that they carry different weights. So oftentimes as we make those changes to, as we do that routine maintenance, there really isn't a large impact on the percentage itself. A lot of times the heavily weighted items are, you know, infrastructure, foundation, things that, uh, like critical items of structure. So, uh, I've broke, it's quite a bit of facilities. So I broke it down basically three categories. So here, uh, you'll recognize these are the schools that we've kind of targeted for major capital projects in the, in the future. Um, you know, they're Washington Hawthorne Vista Park Highlands. So these are the lower, uh, lower end of the scores in our district. Then you get here in the middle range. So these are, these are some of the, uh, buildings that quite haven't hit that 30 year mark. Um, and you'll see we're still scoring pretty well. Once again, that's through routine maintenance and minor projects, roof repairs or roof replacements, things like that. Um, so you know, that, that's our obligation to, to the, uh, the taxpayers that we, you know, once they fund these buildings, we build them, we maintain them. So we really like to see all of our structures basically in this category. Something you can't control, they're going to degrade no matter what. But, um, but for the most part, uh, we got a pretty healthy middle range here.
Really quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
I know Southridge, we've had some issues with their.
Hydronics.
Yeah.
Correct.
I, I noticed that on here, Southridge doesn't seem to be falling in, that doesn't seem to hurt us?
No. So I, I made the decision to basically, uh, since that is under repair currently, um, or in design to be repaired. Well, I'll get to that. I'll touch on that. It's one of the.
Yeah, it's coming up, but that's why I was, I didn't see.
Yeah, I anticipate that once, once that's fixed, we'll be good. It's still an operating system. We just have some concerns about the, the integrity of, of the, the system overall. So we, we, I didn't dock that in the score.
Okay. So if it weren't.
If it weren't, if it weren't getting repaired?
Yeah. If it doesn't get repaired soon.
Oh, it would degrade.
So, so where would our score be?
Uh, it's hard to say. I, I couldn't even really guess because once again, given the weighting system and the equation that they use, I'd have to, I'd have to plug it in and, and see how it changes the score.
I mean, would it be below the SCAP funding limit or?
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay. So it's not that.
No, it's, no, it's.
Perfect.
No, we'd still, it'd still be a pretty healthy score. It'd just be, you know, something we'd have to, I mean, really there is no option to repair it in my mind. We have to get it done. So.
Okay.
And then of course here you'll see a lot of our newer structures, uh, new constructions. Uh, you'll see Cascade and Lincoln. So those are approaching, you know, roughly 12 years of age, still scoring fairly high. So, um, you know, they, once again, that's just a credit to our maintenance department and, uh, just the routine maintenance they're doing to make sure that, uh, they're keeping up on things. So those scores don't drop. Are there any questions about the scores specifically? All right. That concludes asset preservation portion. Uh, now moving on to capital projects. All right. So big news, uh, Tri-Tech core modernization. So, uh, we did have the bid opening and the parent low bidder was, is, uh, Sherwinelle Construction Company. I believe the, the bid award is before you tonight for your approval. So it was a very, uh, very competitive, which is good because that's usually a credit to the architect and his, their design team. If you have a lot of, uh, pricing that's come in really close, um, that means that their drawings are, are good, which drawing, good drawings lead to good projects. So, um, there were 10 alternates on this project and all of them were alternates we wanted to, to accept. Um, we were just, the reason we broke it out so far is because this is a state funded project and does have a finite, uh, cost amount. Uh, we really wanted to have the option if the bids came in high, that we start to prioritize those all, those alternates and, uh, accept them as, as best we could with keeping that budget in mind. But luckily the numbers we got were very favorable and we were able to accept all 10. And just, uh, just to give you an idea of how close the bidding was, after accepting all 10 alternates, the two lowest bidders were only $3,000 apart. So once again, that's a credit to the drawings and there weren't, wasn't a lot of ambiguity and everybody was able to get, put really good pricing to it. Um, it did come in roughly about $3 million underneath our high budget or high estimates for bid. So, uh, that's of course favorable. That means it's a good bidding environment for us. So this project went out at the right time. Um, so next steps, we'll start having our pre-construction meetings. Of course, this project doesn't launch until mid-July roughly. So a lot of times to plan, a lot of times to kind of, um, make any coordinations that need to happen. We do have some, uh, basement activities happen over spring break to just try and eliminate one more schedule, uh, issue that might come up that we can kind of push schedule ahead in July. So, um, we'll get that wrapped up and that way we can just turn it straight over to the contractor come July. And this again, if you recall, this was originally proposed or being planned for as a multi-phase project where we'd have to move students around and whatnot. But, uh, we've, uh, we're pretty confident that we'll be able to basically make it one phase, which is ideal, uh, for everyone. So, um, that of course helps schedule, helps, uh, just run, helps Tri-Tech remain functioning and, uh, teaching the students. So, uh, that's, that's good. And of course, uh, we have a projected completion date of December of 2026. So it'll be a winter move, but you know, we've got several of those under our belt now and, uh, we've been very successful. So no worries there. Any questions about Tri-Tech? All right. Scoreboards, this is a hot item. Fortunately, uh, my department failed to deliver these on time. Uh, we've had some difficulty navigating the municipalities and the permitting process. Uh, we've had some challenges there. And then of course, yeah, as we've gotten looking at these, uh, closer, the existing infrastructure, these scoreboards with structural engineers, they've raised some issues and some concerns. And of course, uh, like LaPierre for instance, an example, we're going to have to replace a fair amount of that steel because the steel is old steel and several years ago they changed the requirements. Uh, the steel nowadays has about 30% more tensile strength. So because of that, we're going to have to basically rebuild half that sign. So a little bit of scope creep there, but, uh, at the end of the day, it's, it's protecting a, a district asset. So we want to make sure that it's, it's on a firm, firm infrastructure. So we did break ground on Roy Johnson today. So, uh, progress and, uh, LaPierre was permitted. So, um, basically just down to contractor and installation at this point. So we're making every effort we can to work with contractor to move that schedule forward. We're running about three weeks behind, kind of approaching four. But, uh, yeah, it's so unfortunate, but we're doing everything we can to, to get it out there as soon as possible. We know that athletics is important to our community and, you know, our, our students, our student athletes deserve to have an operating scoreboard. So yes.
Speaking of LaPierre Field, did we ever get that flagpole up there?
I will have to get back to you. I don't believe there's one currently.
We talked about getting, getting the flagpole up there for the national anthem.
Let me, uh, let me follow up on that with the team because I do remember that coming up and we did talk about it at a meeting at one point. So let me just, uh, follow up on that. Cause I know there was some discussion about it, like a temporary solution. And anyway, we'll follow up.
Also on the ground flag.
What's that?
On the ground flag.
There we go.
It's easy. Also along those lines, we had talked about sponsorships for both of those.
Correct. And I believe there's an RFP, uh, that was at least issued or, or published, uh, for those opportunities. So we are, we are pursuing that. I don't know if it's closed yet though.
Just wanted to see where we were at.
It's open, but not included. Yeah.
So it is RFP went out, uh, I believe they are due proposals or due April 2nd.
RFP stands for.
Uh, request for proposals. Sorry. So, so we wanted to treat it like a traditional open bid concept while we're not, we're not really asking for a service per se, uh, like we, we collected bids obviously for the project. We wanted to keep it as open as possible. That way we can show, hey, we give, we gave open opportunity to anybody in the community in the state, whatnot. So, um, so it's been raining the paper twice and we, um, if anybody's listening out there, please, please submit. So please do.
Have we had anyone submit?
Uh, yeah. So on the details of that, I'm sorry to cut you in. Um, so it's, uh, within the RFP, we asked for, um, the, the life of the sign. So we, we expect the asset to last about 20 years. And so with that sponsorship donation would, would be, um, a naming banner. Uh, so imagine something being hung at the bottom of the sign, potentially at the top of the sign, just depending on, on size and scope and everything. Uh, but, but a naming, right? So proudly sponsored by company X. Um, and with that donation, obviously that monetary item will go into that particular school's athletic fund, just like they, they get money in their funds, uh, when they sell gate money. Um, they can use that money at their discretion. So obviously it goes right back to kids. So it's, it'd be, it's going to be a good thing. So we hope obviously it's very competitive, hence lucrative, uh, because ultimately we want to make sure obviously we, we give as much of, of those proceeds back to our kids. So.
So is the funding for the signs coming from the athletic?
Oh, no, 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 no. Totally separate. This is a capital project. So yeah, this is.
So it's a capital project?
Yes. Yes. This is a capital project.
I thought the intention of the sponsorship was to cover the cost of the capital project.
It was for, um, that's, that was the model for Lamson. And then we had already had these in the queue and purchased when we were talking to the board about Lamson and the question came up about sponsorship and could that be pursued? So we are pursuing the, because the board updated the policy on advertising in schools. So we are pursuing the sponsorship of, you know, which will help pay, but it's not going to pay for the capital investment.
But I guess the question is, is why would, why would the sponsorship go straight to the athletic department budget? Why wouldn't it come to the capital fund or some other area of the budget? Why directly to sports would be my question, because it's not coming out of, it's not coming out of their budgets. So why would they?
And they typically don't, right? So that's, I mean, the, the scoreboards, they are capital. So we, we just discussed wanting to target the money back to students and programs.
But why athletics?
In this case, because they're athletic scoreboards.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I, I'd like to look into that. Not that, not that athletics, that wouldn't be a great place, but make sure that we have a, I mean, i- is that the most appropriate place to have a nice windfall of cash? There may be other areas that might be equally at need or, I mean, let's just use an example, um, DECA at, at, or the music department. They, they don't have an opportunity for a scoreboard. So it might be one of those things where instead of going straight to sports, maybe we say, hey, let's divide it between extracurriculars or have, have users money and to, to give it not just to the athletics. Athletics have a lot of revenue streams.
Would it go to the ASB? Is that how?
So ASB is a separate fund.
Yeah. Well, but, but athletics is within the ASB fund is what I'm asking.
Yes. I mean, it, it obviously could be.
Well, you and I, why don't we do this? Let's, we'll follow up on some of these questions and provide a follow up. We just didn't think on the, on the sponsoring the scoreboard, it was like asking somebody to retroactively pay for something we had already purchased. So that's, that's kind of why we didn't go that way.
I don't, I don't actually have a problem with that, with someone retroactively covering the cost of something we've already spent. So I'm okay with the money going towards the actual.
And it'll be interesting, like at this point, I think one of your questions was, has anyone, have we received any?
I, to date I have not received.
Yeah. So we, we just don't, the, the other, you know, the other one really, right? We were, there were people approaching us. So, uh, it'll, it'll be, it, this is, it, you know, it'd be sort of like frosting on a cake, I guess. It would be a nice bonus if somebody did, but we're just not even sure anybody's going to be interested.
I guess my question is, is beyond putting it in the paper, which are we talking to Tri-City Herald? Um, I, I mean, what else have we? Besides putting it in, I was told I got to use this. Um, besides putting it in the paper, what else have we done? I mean, are we having anybody actively calling people, you know, businesses within the community and saying, hey, here are some opportunities?
We did make those calls when the, um, in the context of the Lamson.
Right. Which sounded pretty successful.
We didn't have any takers. We only had the one.
So, but we had a, a significant.
Big credit union.
Right. So it might be an opportunity if we do the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah. We can follow up and see what we can do, but just, just so you know, in the Lamson situation, we had a, you know, that credit union, uh, approaching us, we reached out to others to say, hey.
Provide a fair opportunity.
Yeah. And, and nobody was interested. So it, it, we, there may or may not be interest at this time. It's still, you know, we now have built a process and there's a potential for the future. Uh, but we'll talk a little bit more. I think first step will be, you know, is anyone going to submit? And obviously we're not going to hold up the scoreboard installations for this or anything. It's, it, the scoreboards are needed, you know, we're going to, uh, move forward with that. And then if, if someone does submit in our FP or if there's more we can do to get the word out, we can see what happens.
Yeah. The other question I have is, is why do they have to do for a full 20 years? I mean, especially if you're just putting a banner, that banner should be easily be able to take down, have it an annual thing or a three year contract. Cause the banner won't last 20 years.
When, when I say banner, I mean, it's, it's actual metal.
Right, right. But, but the metal, but even then a metal would fade.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, just like you see these at 10 years, they're already starting to fade. Um, why not do a, a three year or a five year, which most businesses would probably be, that would be far more palatable than a huge sum of money for 20 years where they're not even sure what the environment will look like in 20 years. Where if you said, hey, let's do a three year sponsorship, I think the community would probably, I mean, from a business perspective, I think businesses would see a, a far better, uh, see it as a better return. Uh, you have a lesser sum, true, but if you do it every three years, you're probably going to end up with more. Um, so, so, I mean, just a thought, it would seem to me that that would be a much better option for sponsorships.
Yep. So, uh, one, once we get submittals in, um, I think negotiations, uh, can, can, can take place at that point in conversations. Cause we want to make sure it's a good partnership.
But I guess my, my thing is, is if we're selling it as a 20 year deal, you're going to exclude a large group of people.
Why don't you let us take some of the feedback and comments and discussion and we'll, we'll have a follow-up conversation and, and see where we can go.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ryan, real quick, who owns that sign off of Leslie that the LaPierre sign, right off of Leslie when you turn left? Is that a city owned sign? Is that a personal sign?
You know, I, I could not, I cannot tell you. I can find out.
Cause it looks, it looks just pretty like beat up and faded and there's like weed, like stuff growing in front of it. So I don't know if that's just something we can just.
We can research it. You know, LaPierre, one thing is kind of muddied the waters for some time with LaPierre was obviously was used by, uh, I believe it was a duster. You know, they, so they, they made some investments. They might've put that sign in. Um, in fact, that, just going back to kind of the procurement of the boards, you know, historically, you know, a lot of times, you know, beverage companies have put these boards in at, at, uh, almost practically free, right? Uh, one of the reasons we decided to actually purchase these boards via capital funds, which is pretty, pretty standard, especially when it comes to things like reader boards and, and, you know, message centers and things like that, was because one of the reasons we're in this spot is because, uh, the dusters were Pepsi, uh, they were Pepsi, uh, client. So they had originally had the board put out there, but of course then once dusters went away and now it's just high school and Kennewick itself, school district is a Coke school, then Pepsi had the, no reason to keep their board out there anymore. So that kind of helps protect from situations like that in the future and any unforeseen costs of, or expenditures that might come, should we change, you know, our, our, our vendors. So, um, but I can follow up on that sign and see.
Just noticed it this weekend when I was driving by. It was beat up. Probably, doesn't look like it's probably been updated since I played for the dusters out there.
Understood. Okay. It just, and if you notice on the rendering, they got the law and the Pierre separated on that. That's, that's just an early rendering. We, we corrected that. So just for anybody that might, might have recognized that, don't worry, we got the spelling correct. So, um, any further questions on, on the scoreboards? No? Okay. All right. Uh, so now Southridge Hydronics. So, uh, we had, uh, meetings recently with the whole team that's working on this, the contractor, uh, the, the engineer, whatnot. What we're running into is the area that we're having, is, is having the most issue, which is right, roughly around A Wing, kind of above the, the kitchen area. Um, we're, we're having difficulty, finding existing structure to basically carry that, that increased load that we're going to put on for additional supporting. Um, and of course we're trying to make sure we do it smartly so that we don't end up building some monstrosity in there that, that of course leads to higher costs, you know, for steel and whatnot. So, um, it's been, that's been kind of the area that's been holding this, uh, finality of the design. So, uh, we did, uh, have a, like I said, we met, let's see, as recently as Monday as a group to try to discuss this and keep working through this. So we provided some additional drawings, uh, some additional photographs. So, uh, hopefully we'll be reaching completion of design here shortly. And once again, we, we've kept, uh, the contractor about new construction, uh, there where they're working with us and making this a priority. So as soon as we have that, we can begin immediately. And, uh, initially we were, we were kind of preparing for the worst. We were trying to target the ideal weather conditions where we could basically take the system down, uh, if we had to, but, uh, worked with the contractor. Uh, we believe we, we have a way to basically work on the, the system, isolate the system and work on it in, in sections so that we can basically maintain heating and cooling to the building. So, um, that was one of the things those. So that was one of the things that was really driving this early on, was whether or not we'd have that capability, and we're pretty sure we've reached that point where we can say we do have that capability. So that's, that's a plus, and helps us on schedule, because we definitely did not anticipate to be in design at this point. But once again, we do want to do it right, we want to make this the last time we touch this, and, yeah, be smart about it. Any questions regarding the hydronic?
So what's the current timeline?
Right now, they're supposed to have some design drawings to us by end of the week, and make, as long as they worked all that out, there's no issues that the contractor has, or feedback, or concerns the contractor has. We should hopefully be starting on it within a couple of weeks, the design completion.
And for completion, complete completion?
Oh, for complete, I think they anticipated like six weeks, six weeks' construction, so. And that was a conservative estimate, so hopefully, that might even slide left a little bit as we get into it. That concludes capital project updates, unless there's any further questions.
Thanks, Ryan, we appreciate it. Next up, we will jump right into unfinished business, recommendation K through five, English learning, language arts materials. Alyssa is going to quickly give us a recap of our presentation, last board meeting, and we'll move on from there. Alyssa, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. All right, well, good evening, thanks for having me back. We spent quite a bit of time two weeks ago diving into the material, and we're just coming back with a recommendation at this meeting. One of our goals is to review our standards this year, strengthen science of reading, and also evaluate and adopt a new material. So I'm not going to go quite into detail with the material at this meeting, but kind of review our process a little bit, and then have a recommendation. It is one of the major responsibilities of the Board of Directors to approve materials. That's in the RCWs. We also have policies around curriculum adoption. This is one of our policies in the Kennewick School District for adoption, and also the selection of materials. So just, just a reminder that we followed these. In the previous presentation a few weeks ago, I spent a lot of time talking about these steps. I'm just going to quickly go over them tonight, about our timeline, our review, that we did have it on public review for comment from the community, and that we presented it at the Instructional Materials Committee as well. I wanted to remind the board that we've been working on this for about 18 months. We've had a team of about 75 teachers, and huge credit to our K-5 content specialist, Jen Jordan, along with her team, Stacy Landon, Crystal Ramos, Dave Alkins, Tina Brewer. They really led a really transparent process for our teachers to go through. They began meeting last year to kind of get their criteria together, look at what materials were available, and narrowing it down, piloting a material, and really, it was really clear there was one that we wanted to recommend. Some of the criteria we used, we wanted to make sure it was aligned to standards, that it was a strong material that was grounded in the up-to-date research around reading, that it had a lot of built-in supports for teachers and students, and that everything was age and grade level appropriate. We talked a little bit about the importance of science of reading, I like this graphic, it kind of helps point, like, all the pieces that have to be together to make a good reader. All of these have to be taught explicitly, systemically, systematically, to make a good reader. Otherwise, we have gaps, and our recommendation, we feel, does a really nice job of this for our students. So we, the committee would like to recommend Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts for use at K-5, for our language arts material. We felt it met our, our standards and what we were looking for as far as being aligned to the science of reading, teaching foundational skills, and also having lots of practice over and over in a systematic approach. We, we liked that it built background knowledge for our students. I just, one of the teachers emailed about similes this week, that they were really pleased with how their students were understanding similes on the STAR progress reporting, and it was because of the poetry unit they had just finished. Lots of good writing, just overall a very robust material. We shared this with community, and we, we really worked hard to get it out for lots of people to see. We put things out on video with links so people could see it, and we did get some responses from community who were at those or looked at them from their homes as well. The board was provided with those comments as well to look at. After the last board meeting, the next day, we had our Instructional Material Committee, and the same presentation was presented to the IMC, and had some great discussion and questions. The IMC did recommend unanimously this recommendation. So that's why I'm bringing it to you tonight, to the board. It's roughly around $1.9 million for this adoption, which we feel really good about. That's a large amount of money, and we feel what we're getting is really, we, we have a good contract based on what we've seen from across the other districts that have gone with this company. And you can see, we've got the digital subscription for eight years. We want to kind of review the consumables after five, we might need to replace some things, some things might not be used, so we'll, we'll update that, and we, they did agree to some payment over time.
Which is to say, we got a much, much, much cheaper deal than some of our neighboring school districts.
We have a, we have a contract I'm really proud of.
Yes. Another, I, I just throw these in there because we have to pass the levy, and I just want everybody to know how, that we're working really hard to keep costs down.
Yeah, yeah, and we didn't get everything. We looked at the, at what was provided, and we feel we, with STAR and Freckle, we already have some things in place, so we didn't want to purchase things that we feel we already have. So with that, I would like to bring to the board a recommendation to approve Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts Core Materials for grades through five, and we can have any discussion or questions that we'd like.
Anybody have any discussion or questions? I'll take a motion to recommend the, the material, and then we can have a discussion if anybody has anything.
A motion to recommend the Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, or excuse me, a motion to approve the Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts Core Materials for grade K through five.
Any discussion, questions, comments?
I, I'd like to say a couple things, or a couple questions, but also, first of all, I, I would like to say congratulations, and, and thank you for making this such an open process. I, you know, you go through this, and families, teachers, you guys have done a great job of trying to allow people to see and be very transparent.
Thank you.
And then, to the point you just made, you have been selective in what you've, what we've needed. And, and I think, going back to, to Mike's comment, you're being fiscally conservative, you're trying to be, to get us what we need, and yet be respectful of our, our taxpayers and our community. The couple of questions I had, first of all, as I've, as I've looked through the program, and then also looked on, on reviews, and what, what comments people have made, both within the community, but also outside of the community. Do we have a way of, of tracking, first of all, performance? It sounds like it's a great program, people have been very successful, but do we have methods in, already in place that as we implement this, we'll be able to see if it's successful and what impact it's having?
Within Kennewick, yes, we've got our district measures with STAR, for example.
So will be STAR is what we'll be measuring?
STAR and, and SBA, the state, the state assessment. And just a real quick reminder, we did show some data from the pilot teachers that is very promising. And I just want to quickly say, I happened to have a, a visit to Canyon View Elementary this morning, and went into three, third, third grade classes where we saw, they were all pilot teachers and are continuing to use the materials because the teachers love them. And to your point, Brittany, at the last meeting, when you, you had gone out to Sage Crest. I mean, this, they were so enthralled with the story, it, it's just incredible, and the teachers are so excited, and the kids are too.
Everybody seems to be very, very happy with this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited. The other thing, though, is, is there another way, beyond the students' performance, is there a way for teachers to be giving feedback to the district about things that they, they find successful, and particularly things that they might need or feel like they're lacking?
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to make sure there's?
Yeah, I won't, I won't belabor too long, but the, the next phase of this is preparing for implementation, which will be training on materials, and that will be ongoing throughout the year. And with that, will be some walkthroughs at times to help go, oh, remember, you've got these pieces? And for a teacher to say, like, where was that that you showed me? And just making sure we support them along the way.
And feedback loops as well, and, you know, we've been talking about that even in the context of our math implementation. It's in year one, and it'll be in year two next year for K-5, so, yes.
Just want to, I mean, I figured as much, you guys do a great job, but just wanted to be explicit in saying, look, we're, when these programs are, are implemented, the foundation is there to, to make sure it's successful.
Absolutely.
Awesome. I, I just want, I got over 30, essentially 30 emails back, or collected emails from all the pilot teachers, and 30 of them were all positive, there was no issue with the curriculum. I saw a bunch of student feedback, so I, I think it's going to be a great curriculum, so I'm, I'm excited. Thank you guys for all your work. With that, Patty, we will call for the roll call, though.
Annie Maltoes?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Really quick, Mike.
Oh. Sorry, Mike. No, no. Thank you, Mike. Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes, all right, thank you. So the approval passes five zero. Next up, we will jump into our last two items, new business. We will be, Alyssa will walk us through the recommendation for K through 12 physical education materials, as well as, I think, a highlight on PE credit.
You've got me for the next one, too, so we'll just hop right in. I'm going to share with you tonight about our instructional material for PE. I will spend a little more time tonight on the material. This one wasn't quite as large in scope as the K-5 ELA, so we, we have just given one meeting to this, if that, if that works. But I, I do want to share a little bit about the material, and again, about the process used to review this material. And I do want to mention this, we're going to be recommending a renewal of one that we're currently using. And then, as was pointed out, once we're done with that, I've got some follow-up information on ways of earning PE credit. Okay, just, we like to always go back to our strategic plan, and one of them was to review standards and to evaluate our instructional materials for PE. I'm going to show you a little bit of a timeline on the next slide, but this is our adoption cycle that's adopted for Kennewick School District. A couple of years ago, we split out health and fitness. So health, we've had material for about three years, but for fitness, it was, this year was the year to adopt. And then also, the board may remember, last year, we broke out, it used to be that health, fitness, and equipment were all together at the same time, and we've broken them out. So health has their own cycle, fitness has their own cycle, and then equipment's on an annual repair and replace. So we're really going to be focusing tonight on that, the instructional materials for fitness. Okay, I'd also just like to mention that national PE standards have been released. We're still waiting for the updates from the state, it, it should be, they're reviewing them right now. When we are talking about physical, physical education and the fitness part, we're really talking about the physical portion, and then cognitive knowledge. Those are two pieces that come into play for PE. With our PE programs, we want to make sure our, our strong PE programs, they're aligned to standards, that we have certified PE teachers teaching those classes, that there's time, space that, that the students have during class, and that there's also materials, instruction assessment for those pieces of the physical and cognitive instruction. So we followed a similar process with this material, as we just mentioned, for K-5 ELA. And so I'm, I'm going to talk through that, and then share a little bit about the material. Our PE teachers meet monthly already, we have strong district-wide professional learning communities. And so they, they started last year really reviewing the standards, and saying, do these materials that we have help us teach the standards? And come to find out, they really, the materials do a nice job of teaching these standards. And it's available for elementary, middle school, and high school. So meeting monthly, they, they were looking at that, and they really felt strongly about wanting to recommend and keep the Five for Life program for K-12. With that comes a component for some assessment and tracking goals, so I'm going to talk about that a little bit more. So just to reiterate, this is a great material that we've been using. There's some updates I'm going to share to help teach the physical portion of PE and that cognitive knowledge portion of PE. Just want to get some pictures of our little cuties, and I'm sure when you're out in schools, you see some of these activities that they're doing to help learn these different pieces. So the material, just quick overview, it's articulated K-12, it builds, and it's appropriate for each grade level. It builds year to year, lots of fun activities for the students, there's nutrition components. You can see a couple of different, I'm sure you've heard of FIT in your homes with your students. I know I've heard about it in mine, and then, and also set, study, sorry, setting goals. Another component that PE teachers like is WellNet. This is a software program for tracking goals, and our schools do use it for their classroom-based assessments. They track the data, there's also videos available, it integrates with our technology. Teachers will have iPads, and they'll be walking around when they're out on the field or in the gym as well. This material has been researched and presented multiple times at national fitness conferences, and it does show that using this helps people with their fitness goals, understanding of fitness knowledge as well. So with the update, there, it's aligned to those updated national standards, there's lesson plans, and it, there's a digital subscription that the teachers are excited to have access to, not just binders of the lessons. We collect a little feedback from staff at the different levels, and they, they think this is the best material to be using with students in PE right now. I know you've seen the slides and have read through them, let me keep going. We did have a public parent preview of this material as well, we did it a few weeks ago. We combined it with a few other materials. And it's a very reasonable cost as well, so about $10,000 for a seven-year license, and then an annual rostering fee to use that database to track fitness goals. It was presented to the Instructional Materials Committee a few weeks ago, and again, was recommended. So I'm bringing it to the board for recommendation that we renew Focus on Fitness, Five for Life, for PE materials for grades K through 12.
Awesome, thank you, any questions? If not, I will take a motion to approve the reading.
Sorry, Mike asked me a question, I have a question. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, this is replacing curriculum that we've already been using?
It's, we have this right now, this is what we're using, and it's just, it's been 10 years since we've reviewed it, and we're, it's a core material, and we just. And it's a core material and we just want to renew it and keep using it.
But we're adding a digital subscription. It sounds like that's one thing that's different. And just on the website, it has, it talks about physical education, nutrition, fitness, the student portfolio series, and so we have access to all of those components.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I will take a motion to approve the renewed program.
Do you have any questions, Josh, when you just came back in?
No, I apologize. I'm on a call tonight, just had to take a quick call.
I make a motion that the board approve or renews the license for Fitness, Five for Life, as core of physical education materials for K through 12.
Great. Patty, the roll call vote, please.
Annie Maltoes?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the motion is approved, five zero.
Okay, thank you. So part two is some follow-up on earning PE credits. So just wanted to remind the board that there are 24 graduation requirements. We've spoken about this. And 0.5 of that's for health, 1.5 of that is for fitness. And I don't know if it's down there in the small print, but it is considered one of the core competencies for graduation, just like English, math, science, social studies. It's in the RCW that we have physical education in the high schools. There is a little caveat that students can be excused from participating in physical education otherwise required on account of physical disability, employment, religious belief, or participation directed athletics, athletics, or military sciences. And we do follow that here in the Kennewick School District. It also talks about who can be excused from this requirement by showing mastery of the knowledge.
Just make one clarification. So the RCW on the previous slide speaks to that students may be excused from PE and then the WAC speaks to such excused students. So if you're excused from PE, this is what you are required to do.
So there, you have to demonstrate mastery in both fitness and knowledge. So that's where this kind of comes into play as well with the standards. These are the PE standards that have to show mastery as well. So there's options for earning those credits. It could be by taking a PE class or it could be by showing proficiency or competency on the knowledge portion of the fitness, the fitness requirements. So to, so let's see. So when we do that in Kennewick, it has to be in both sections. It can't just be one. We have to show both. To show competency in the physical, it can be participation in military science, directed sports, or it can be a log. This was a change, I've got a little bit of a timeline. We updated this last school year and eliminated an assessment test.
For the physical portion.
For the physical portion. And then there is the knowledge portion as well, which to show that competency is through an assessment. And I'll talk about some updates we've made to that over the past two years. So we shared this information with the board last year because last year we eliminated that physical assessment. We also changed the knowledge portion to the OSPI assessment. We provided a study guide as well. And we, I was surprised at the results last year. We did see, I want to talk about that real quickly. We did see an increase in the knowledge part. We had like 20 kids who didn't turn their logs in. This number would be a lot higher, but we had some kids not turn their logs in. So I'm a little frustrated with those little darlings. So, but I still wanted to look more at the knowledge test. So over the summer, and it's not year 45, I apologize for that. Over the summer, I looked at some analytics of the assessment and I did see some irregularities in scoring. So we have updated those and changed a few pieces this year and it is definitely improving the pass rate. So I'm pleased to see that that pass rate has gone up quite a bit this year. And then we still have no physical assessment. It's the logs or direct sports.
My only question is, are the counselors, on the counselor side, are they, I know they're aware of this, but are they using it and leveraging this for those kids who need that? I mean, I feel like it's not.
It's, that's a hard question to answer. We have it out on the website and it gets talked about, but I can't speak for every single conversation.
It's very anecdotal, but I can tell you that my kid went through this thing and I'm like, didn't? And she's like, and then it wasn't even brought up. And so it's very anecdotal, but I just feel like our, I could be speaking out loud, but I feel like our counselors are not utilizing this.
What I think we can do is there's a monthly meeting with the counselors and with BJ Wilson, who's the Director of Student Services, who meets with the counselors. We can get this on a counselor meeting agenda to review it
Please do.
and make sure, as well as a principal meeting
Yeah.
agenda, and make sure that not only, you know, we're working to improve our district-wide communication about all of the options to earn credit in various ways and where there's flexibility within that 24-credit framework, where competency credit, all of it. And so I'm looking at, Alyssa, we will work and build some additional systems to make sure that everybody knows this information and it's being communicated.
Well, I think also another big point is you're seeing the number of assessment attempts decreasing and yet the number of people passing going up, which is what we want, which tells us that kids are not having to take this test multiple times likely to pass. The other thing, I would encourage the counselors, but also I would love it if the coaches are encouraging their students that are participating on teams, particularly because they may know some of those students that are struggling to graduate. And again, if they can get a, if they can get a full credit from the PE, that might open up a spot where they can now retake a math class or retake, to get the core competencies in some other areas. They excel in athletics, they're doing athletics, so that they can get the core competencies so they can graduate because they've maybe been deficient somewhere else. So if some of these coaches, I think letting them be aware as well, so they're keeping their eye out for, hey, I know these are some of the kids that are struggling academically, here is a way that we can help them to have some extra time, openings in their schedule where they might be able to take a class. Because that's really where I see a huge benefit is. Some of these students are people that, some of these are students that struggle and by, you know, they're struggling to get the number of credits to graduate. And if we can open up their schedule and give them another credit where they can, they have the opportunity to pass.
Yeah, I do just want to note, this is to date, the 168. We've got a couple more attempts for this year. So the 24-25 is not complete. And it's not answering your question exactly, but it is, you don't have to sign up through the counselor. So it's on the website, you can get to it.
I know it is.
But it does need to be more.
I know it is, but I, I mean, we all, we all have, this, there's like, I swear, this is one of the most common questions we get.
Okay.
I mean, is like, it's like, why don't you guys do this? And I'm like, we do, we do do that. Well, that's not what I'm hearing. And I'm like, I don't know why you're not hearing that. I just, I don't know, I just, it's not being.
There's certainly, and to echo, I've heard the same. There's certainly a disconnect and most.
I've had this question so many times.
Most of the parents that have come to me have never had either a coach or a counselor say anything about it.
It's all word of mouth.
It is. And unfortunately, word of mouth will benefit probably the kids that, I hate to say it, but may not need it the most. The kids that may not hear it from word of mouth are often the kids that are struggling the most academically. And those are the kids we really want to be taking advantage of this because that will give them that extra credit where they can open their schedule to take a math class or take a reading class or get the credits they need to graduate.
Yep, that's helpful. And then Alyssa, can you just remind me, there, it's been a couple of years since I've looked at this because we kind of figured it out in my own household. But there used to be something with spring sports where it used to be that you had to complete your season before you could take the assessment, but there wasn't an assessment offered after the completion of the spring sports season. Have we looked at that? Or is it possible to take an assessment during your season and then just turn the log in?
Let me follow up on that one. I know like if you play softball in the springtime, right? I don't remember that that changed, but.
Yeah, I just know that it used to be the catch rely on our fall sports rather than the spring ones.
Okay, let me check on that one.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I'll follow up.
My one quick suggestion, because I know we've got a phenomenal IT department. I'd be curious if we could get that log electronic and just filled out online and submitted so that way you don't have to worry about folks.
Yes, please.
Like turning in a paper log.
I don't know if Beach could handle that.
I think so, I think.
I like it, yeah, that's great.
Don't, don't get me any work.
Trash talking.
Awesome, thank you so much, Alyssa.
You got it, thanks.
Yeah.
Robin, give him a.
Yeah.
Just say yes.
He built it already, look at that, you are thinking. All right, last up on the agenda, new business, Title IX. Dr. Pearson will just, yeah, bring the document up. Okay, perfect. You want me to take it away?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So tonight, the board's going to be discussing a formal Title IX complaint against the state of Washington. A lot of, a handful of boards across the state have sent letters, have kind of done what fits within, I suppose, their district. And so the discussion tonight will be around submitting a formal complaint. Ultimately, what's leading districts to do this? A big part of it is just the compliance with the laws, the mixed messaging from our state superintendent, and then just the common sense reality of where we stand. So this document was drafted up, sent through, reviewed through all the channels here within the district. And we're looking at submitting this complaint. So I will open the floor to discussion. If anybody would like to start.
Let me find it, I just had one part. There's somewhere, I think it was on page five. I think it's right under, after request for federal support. Point number one says assurance of federal funding, confirmation that our adherence to federal mandates will not result in the loss of Title I, et cetera. I don't, to me, that was a little bit confusing because we are not necessarily adhering to the federal mandates. But I need some clarification on what we're pointing out there.
Yeah, I think the idea is looking for confirmation that if we do adhere to the federal executive orders that we would not lose federal funding.
Okay, so it's not saying that we are adhering.
It's not saying we are, it's saying we want, we want confirmation and clarification that if, basically, both parties are saying someone's going to withhold funding somewhere. And so we're, I think the piece to that is just really looking at who's going to.
Okay, yeah, I, thank you. I read it differently, I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah.
One, you know, I, we got an email, I think you guys saw this as well, from a track coach that was, we've got an email as well from the track coach that was again just reemphasizing the importance of this issue where they were expressing the differences between the young men and young women in their performance at track and stating how detrimental it would be by having young men participating against young women. It would be unfair and would deny the young women the opportunity to excel in their sport, which is exactly what Title IX is there to do, is to protect young women and particularly protect their ability to, I believe, as Title IX directly states, denies them the equal opportunity to participate and excel in competitive sports. The one thing I, you know, I don't see in this, but I think, I don't know if we want to add it or not, but just a reminder that any form of retaliation for someone submitting a Title IX claim is prohibited by law. So if the state retaliated in the form of threatening our federal, threatening our state funding because of a Title IX complaint, that's actually prohibited by law. And they would certainly be breaking, at that point, they'd be breaking the law by retaliating. And Title IX complaints are protected. So I think, you know, obviously, I am apprehensive. I am concerned that certainly members of our state, different state leadership, I would be, you know, there's apprehension that they would be vindictive or try to retaliate for us recognizing this obvious violation of Title IX. But at the same time, if they do threaten our state funding or were to put our, were to do anything that would threaten our young women or our young men's ability to participate, that would be a violation of, or that would be a retaliatory, that would be retaliation for the Title IX complaint. So I just want to remind you guys, there is a degree of protection here. And I think, yes, it's important that we stand up for our young women and make sure that they have a competitive environment to participate in. Yeah, I've expressed how strongly I feel about this in the past.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
And for what it's worth, too, I know that when we talk about Title IX, we often refer to athletics. But actually, a greater concern to me is on, I don't know what page this is because I'm looking at the slides.
Page four?
Yeah, page four, where it says specific areas of conflict. Point four, the parental rights statement requirement. You know, it's important to me that parents in our school district are informed if their student changes their name or their pronoun. And I want that protection for our school district to be able to implement that in our school district. So just pointing out that it's not, we're talking a lot about athletics, but it's much more than athletics.
I think the restroom's the biggest thing for me, honestly. I mean, it's about safety, fairness, and exposure. Exposure is part of that. I think that, I don't have any doubt that Reichdahl wants to retaliate against us with every fiber of his being, but I mean, again, I think we have that protection. And I think it's just, it's a 90/10 issue. He's just so underwater on this issue. It's just, nobody wants this, nobody wants this. And everybody knows in their heart of hearts, in their gut, that this is wrong. And so, I mean, we, it's our, we have to protect kids.
Obviously, he's wanted it, except past the, you know, these are RCWs. This is not a Reichdahl, it's an RCW.
It's our legislators.
True?
It is our legislators, not the people.
It's a law. That are elected by the people. I want to be really clear, I'm a big fan of Title IX, I get it. But every time we go down this political road, which I've already, you guys know where I stand on this, we shouldn't be doing this. You guys want to change this? Go lobby. Go drive your backside to Olympia, get in front of these people. But you got to talk to the Democrats. You got to talk to the, you got to talk to the people you disagree with in order to at least see where they are. I had to do that for my business. I went over there specifically. All the Republicans were on my side. I had to go sit down with Democrats and get things changed. Did I get everything I wanted? No. Did I make a difference? Yes. The only way you do that, show up, work it, and understand, it's an uphill battle. We took a vow to follow the law, not the ones we like. We took a vow to follow the laws, full stop. So the only way we do this is by finding a way to change the law. So if you guys think we can do that with this letter, then go nuts. I'm not taking any part of this deal because I have already stated we should not be going down this political road. Because again, the other thing we're supposed to be is nonpartisan. That is a wildly partisan document.
Well, I can appreciate, again, this document isn't trying to change any laws. What, the difficulty here is we've been put, we are supposed to follow Title IX.
Correct.
And we are supposed to follow state law. The problem is, is that we can't be in compliance with both, as both are written right now. So what we're saying is, is we're going to the federal government, because quite frankly, this is a battle that we can't fight. So what we're doing is going to the federal government. So what we're doing is going to the federal government and saying, state is not following what you're saying. You two need to figure it out. They need to, they need to give us direction. And right now, we don't have direction, and either one of us, the problem is, is we need federal, we need federal funding and we need state funding. We need both. So if either one of them threatens their funding to us, we are in trouble. And so the only way we can move forward and do so in a responsible manner is for them to define what it is. And federal law, federal law has precedence over state law in this area, if it becomes federal law. And that's what we need. We need clarification. And the whole point here is, we're not, we have not, what we're stating is, is we're filing a complaint saying, look, according to your Title IX as written by the federal government, the complaint is, is Washington State is not in compliance with that, which is true. We're not, we're not taking a political stance. We're not saying, I mean, yes, we believe, a lot of people believe that Title IX is the way we want to go. But regardless of where you stand on the issue, whether you're on one side or the other, I think everybody wants clarification. Otherwise, everyone can't move forward. And that's where I feel this letter makes it big, or well, excuse me, it's not a letter, it's a whistleblower complaint. This whistleblower complaint says, we're not, the state is not in compliance with federal, federal executive, or federal Title IX. Our federal dollars are at risk. What do we do? And so if we just sit here, federal government can come in and take our money. If we sit here, the state can come and take our money. And so really, we're, the point of this whistleblower complaint is saying, look, we need clarification. Federal government, they're required, with a Title IX complaint, they're required to come and investigate the complaint typically, in a timely fashion, which is typically between 60 and 90 days. So we should have some degree of clarity on how we as board members follow the law within 60 to 90 days. Problem solved. And I agree. At the end of the day, we are obliged to follow the law. The question is, is right now, which law do we, I mean, do you follow Title IX? Do you follow state law? And I don't know.
Well, and I think, but that's the problem. I mean, I can, if it's going to be a Title IX complaint with the feds, the feds are going to say, well, follow the law. Do what we say. Then Washington's going to turn around and give us a finger and say, too bad, do this. So again, we're putting ourselves in the middle of a whirlwind that at this point, I just, that at this point is not clear. The state and the feds are going to go into this regardless, regardless of whether we file this or not. They're already, it's happened. So yes, this may speed along more quickly. Totally get that, understand it. But at the same time, to assume that somehow the feds are going to say, oh, well, we're going to cut off all the funding for, you know, money to the state, but we're going to take, kind of, cart out a little piece and we're giving them their money. They're not, they're going to cut off everything to Washington.
Well, realistically though, they're not going to cut off everything to Washington. I mean, you can look and see what happened in Maine, and I think Maine is a good test, test case. The fact is, is it, Maine, it was brought to a head in Maine, and they came to a resolution. They were able to work it out between the state and the federal government, because the state knows they need the federal dollars. They can't not get the federal dollars. And so likewise, here, the whole idea is, is we put them on a running clock. They've got roughly 60 to 90 days to appropriately address this. Give us, work with the state and come to a conclusion. If we don't have a conclusion, then we can't move forward as a district, because we can't know what we're supposed to do. I just want to know direction. Is the direction, this is what Title IX states. Is the federal government going to hold states the Title IX? If they're not, then we need to follow state law. If they are, then we need to follow federal law. And so that's, I can appreciate your point, but that's where I say, look, this forces direction. It forces the two main decision makers to actually have to sit down the table in the state of Washington and give us direction.
Real quick, Annie wanted to.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, I do agree with Mr. Connors that we should not be getting, splitting into, sorry, splitting into political sides, but I do agree with this, because as a young female athlete, going back to playing soccer when we would do conjoined practices with the boys, as much as we would like to say we could physically, we could have never competed with them at a high level. It would have never been able to happen. Our best varsity player could have never competed with their, in the middle of their team. I also do not feel comfortable with young men changing in the same locker room that I'm in. So I do agree that we should not be assuming that money is going to get taken away from us because we submit this, but at the same time, I do think that this is important, that we say that most young women are very uncomfortable with things being changed based on gender identity.
My argument is this is nonpartisan. This is getting politics out. Like, I feel like they've inserted politics in, and we're saying, no, 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 let's get those out.
Come on, Britton, you want to say it? You can't skill it.
I know, I always have some. I just want to say that I really echo Dr. Miller's approach to this. To me, I'm not making a bold political statement. I'm just saying, we need some direction. I've shared what my personal feelings and beliefs are, but there have been other proposals suggested in one-on-one conversations with board members leading up to this action, that I have been very clear with board members, that I was unwilling to take, that we're very political decisions and very political moves. This, to me, is just saying, hey, we're in a situation and we need some guidance on what to do with it. So just want it on the record that I'm not making a broad, bold political statement. I'm asking for clarification.
And to be honest, if I saw that there was racial discrimination or religious discrimination going on someplace in our state that I was fully aware of, and I could give instances of, like we're doing in this letter, I would, again, file a Title IX complaint with the federal government, because that is wrong. I fundamentally believe that we need whistleblowers when there is discrimination based on our federal laws. We need people to come forward and say, this is wrong. That is how we desegregated schools. That is how we gave women the right to have a fair and competitive environment to play in with Title IX, is because people came forward and said, this is not fair. This is not right. And so I think, beyond the fact that this helps these two people, these two entities come to clarity, I would also say, we have a moral obligation to try to fight discrimination and try to fight, try to, try to stand up against things that are not right and putting people in situations where they're not treated fairly, and this is a perfect example.
Anything else from anyone? Dr. Pierce?
The only thing I'd like to add is, I think it's very clear and evident that there's a big difference between what is coming from the federal government and what is coming from the state level. I mean, it's, that's, I think, widely known. You just have to read the newspaper and pay attention to what's going on. I just want to confirm and clarify for everyone who might be listening. This is not changing, this letter does not change any current policy that we have on the books here in Kennewick. It doesn't change, it doesn't change any, it's not going, it's not passing a policy that conflicts with law, and there's no change in our current practice. So I just don't want anyone who's watching to interpret this as, as a change in policy or something like that, which, which could potentially be in conflict with the law, which is not what the board is doing right now. The board's submitting a complaint.
Yeah, the other quick thing to add recently to kind of to your lobbying point, Mike, which I don't disagree with, even that, like, a lot of boards have done things to lobby, like through WIAA and get like amendments passed and stuff. And then just this week, Reichdahl sends out a letter that basically tells the WIAA, like, hey, basically, even if you pass these amendments, like, we're confident that you won't implement them. And it's like, he's already like saying that if we go, like, we go through that process to try to make change, that they're going to block it or not. So we, I just personally think we need some clarification here. We need some help because.
That's a good example, because honestly, they can't. I mean, they can pass the amendments, but they can't implement them because the state law still prohibits it. And so, I mean, he's, he's right. They can't do anything about it.
And again.
They can pass the amendments, but you can't enforce them.
Again, we are not changing any policy, and that needs to be very clear with everybody in the community. We do not have the right to break the law. And we are not changing any policy. What we are saying here is, we are stuck between two different, two different entities that haven't clearly defined who is, what takes precedence here. And so what we're looking for, this is essentially saying, it's a complaint that says that based on Title IX, Washington Superintendent.
Out of compliance.
WIAA is out of compliance. So that is why this is a whistleblower complaint. It is saying, we are not in compliance with the law. We're not changing anything in our district, but we are simply saying it is not in compliance. So thank you for pointing that out, Tracy. I think that's a very important distinction.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Anything else to add? If not, then I will take a motion to file the Title IX complaints as it states there in the letter, whoever.
I move that we file a complaint, Title IX complaint against the Washington State Superintendent Chris Reichdahl, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, and the Washington State Interscholastic Activity Association, WIAA.
All right. Patty, we have a motion on the floor. You will call the roll call vote and.
Annie Malto?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Abstain.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Glenn Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes four to zero. All right, moving on. Next meeting agenda, we will again go over our preliminary budget, 25, 26, and our annual staff human resources report. We have no other businesses authorized by law, so we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.